6 o'clock and it's the beginning of our Board of Selectmen's meeting of April 22nd. We have, our town is recording the meeting and I am also doing a video recording. Is there anybody else here that may be recording the meeting?
I'm recording.
Sure can. Could you just give your name and your address?
Right now, student Hannah, May 22th.
You have that? Okay. The first order of business is signing the warrants which we're doing right now. And the second order of business, does anybody have any public discussion for the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead Lisa.
One week ago today, my life changed in a very dramatic way. I witnessed firsthand of the terrorist attack at the Boston Marathon. I was merely yards away. I just want to thank my friends, my family, members of the community, and this Board of Selectmen. Although I am not physically harmed, my emotional scars will remain with me for a lifetime. No one should ever witness the horrific acts of violence and I just want to thank all of my colleagues here for giving me the time that I needed. And thanks for reaching out to me at a time of need.
Thank you Lisa. And I think it would be very appropriate for us to take a moment of silence in remembrance of everybody that was affected by the bombing in Boston. All those people that have been hurt and lost their lives. And also for all the first responders and all the public that helped during that time. On the agenda tonight, we have some business to attend to. One would be to approve the New Balance footrace. We have some action to take on ambulance fees. We have an agreement with a company that's going to review the area where the old Freetown screw exists. We have a sidewalk opening permit. Although Board of Health, I think there's one item under the Board of Health that I received this afternoon. Do you have all the mosquitoes?
Um, yeah, I haven't.
You want it? I got it here.
It was canceled for tonight.
Yeah, it's canceled for tonight, but there was an update.
Oh, I didn't see the update.
It came in by email late this afternoon. Hold on for one second.
Well, you can take care of that.
All right, when I get down to it. All right. And then we have some personnel actions to deal with tonight. And a couple of things under new business. But at 6:15 tonight, we're going to have a Soil Board meeting. And on the agenda tonight in the Soil Board will be action on the Cape Cod aggregate permit. So we've got some time. We've got about 10 minutes and it would be appropriate to have DDP give a rundown on that outside of the Soil Board permit.
Something that the Board of Selectmen would be interested in, but I suspect you'll want to have the full Soil Board here to hear.
We can set them on some business.
Yeah, all right. We're going to bypass the Soil Board for 10 minutes until 6:15 and we're going to go through what we have to talk about. All right, the first thing on the agenda is the New Balance Reach the Beach Relay Race, scheduled for May 19th from 5:30 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. And it has been approved by the police chief and it just needs the approval of the Board of Selectmen. The race starts, it looks to me like on the map, it starts up near Freetown Street which is upon acquit a regional high school, comes down Washburn Road or, I guess it comes down Gurnee Road to Chase Road and then down Chase Road and ends at the police department. What's your pleasure?
To make a motion to approve the New Balance Reach the Beach Relay for May 19th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So what? All right. The next thing on the agenda is a request by the fire chief and the town accountant. And this has to do with going back a number of years to reconcile the fire department's system that they use for keeping track of and billing ambulance fees. What happens is that many years ago, the town approved a bylaw for third-party billing as long as the individuals have health insurance. And those that don't have any insurance, the town waives. So they went back and they reconciled back to, God, somewhere in here, it was quite a long time.
October 12th.
October of 2012. And then further back, I guess that last amount had to do with reconciling their computer system. So it's a total of $193,438.80 to waive. And that brings the fire department's computer system up to snuff with the town accountant's accounting records.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. The next one here is an agreement and I'll hand this over to Mr. Brown.
As I told the Board a while ago, we received two pieces of funding relating to Freetown screw. $460,000 is to do the assessment and demolition and we have a grant for $15,000 to do a basic feasibility and marketing study for the location of senior housing on that site. The contract before you is with the Stan-Tac Corporation in the amount of $15,000 broken down as is indicated in the backup pages. And I would ask the Board to approve entering into this agreement.
Is there a motion?
There is.
Motion to approve the agreement, unanimous.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Unanimous. All right.
And this is a huge step for the town.
Yes.
And long overdue. And are you letting the people know on the senior housing?
Now with the product.
Okay, good. Thanks.
And they agree.
Okay, the next thing is an order of business, a request from N-Star Gas to bring a gas line that's on Dr. Brayley Road into the location at, the residence at 71 Dr. Brayley Road.
73.
73?
71.
This says 71. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Is anybody from Dr. Brayley Road?
Anybody here from Dr. Brayley Road or N-Star Gas?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Okay. Got to take care of that one. Hold on for a second. Board of Health is next, but I got the thing here Lisa. Board of Health.
Just to let people know that there was some discussion about aerial spraying in the area. It was to take place for tonight, but it's been canceled, so they're going to, they plan on doing it on Wednesday night of the Bolton Cedar Swamp off of County Road. So just an FYI for people in case you hear anything or see anything, aerial spraying. And I'm kind of glad they're doing it earlier this year.
Yes.
That a waiting.
Let's see, should we get into personnel actions? We got time, we got five minutes.
We've got five minutes.
Yep.
It's all yours.
We have some appointments to make and we discuss them all. The first one on the list is Kevin B. DeZemaris. He wants to be appointed to the Health Insurance Advisory Committee. Term expires June 30th, 2013. Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have another appointment to make, this one to the Tax Increment Financing Board. This is for Richard Brown from 332 Pleasant Street, or to Richard Brown.
How about I do this? How about I make a motion to approve Richard Brown, Paul Sadek, Robert Raymond, Michael Motta, and Anita Howland to the Tax Increment Financing Board.
Second.
You want?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, Anita knows that she's here for a year on that board, right?
You tell her.
I'm not telling her, you can tell her.
Anita's our town treasurer and she's retiring June 30th. And certainly she has the option of staying on, but I kind of doubt that she'd want to stay on the TIF board. We'll see what she says.
Know what she's going to say.
Yeah, you know, huh?
I can only guess.
Next one is an appointment to the Regional School Committee. We have three people that would like the appointment.
No.
Two.
Two now.
Pardon. That's why we wanted to.
Two.
So one is Mr. David Brown, the other one is Philip Fallozano. Motion or discussion? Make a motion to appoint one, maybe some discussion?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Well, the two people we have, David Brown is a 12-year veteran who would like to be reappointed. He took some time off. Philip Fallozano has never been on it, so my feelings are we should take the guy with the experience, 12 years, Mr. Brown, David Brown, and appoint him back on it, wouldn't you folks think?
I'm with you. I mean, I was on the school committee when he was on the school committee, so I know he's worked hard for that and in that, you know, he's got that expertise, something that the town needs right now, especially when we're going forward trying to hire a new superintendent, and I know he's going through that process as well. So because of those two gentlemen are left and because David Brown has actually the most experience, I will make a motion to appoint Dave Brown.
All right, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? David Brown has your point.
Nope, you have one more. This one.
No, we got one more. Finance Committee.
I think it probably isn't the last one.
Hey, use this one. All right, you got it?
I think it was stuff with attachment.
Yep. We have one more that wants to be, one appointment, one more appointment to be made to the Finance Committee. We have one person that wants that appointment so far, Mr. Philip Fallozano.
I'll make that motion to appoint Phil Fallozano on the Finance Committee.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, are these all the openings or are there still?
I think there's one more.
One more on the Finance? And library trustees as well?
Not sure about the library.
Yeah, the library has one, but there's somebody supposedly coming, there's supposed to be a recommendation to us coming down at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, I guess we can end there since it's quarter past 6:00. Everybody from the Soil Board here? Anybody that's on the Soil Board, please come up. We have some seats for you. Yes.
I can draw this from the agenda.
Okay. We have enough seats, we have enough seats for Karen. Karen, this is a seat up here for you.
Yeah, sure too.
Actually, you're welcome. So you have them.
Yeah, yeah. This one, one of the packets that I was planning to get in for you.
You have an extra one for Jonathan? No?
We have a meeting.
If not, I can look.
He can look on mine.
No, I don't.
Okay, 6:15 and we're going to open the, we're going to put the Selectmen's meeting on hold and we're going to open the Soil Board meeting of April 22nd. The agenda, update, approve Cape Cod aggregate soil permit and conditions governing the soil permit, approve minutes for the meetings of April 26th, 2012, it may 17th, 2012, June 11th, 2012. Signed schedule, bills payable, and discuss the dates for the spring site inspections, something that Mr. Baumgartner hasn't had the opportunity to do. You'll enjoy it.
I can't wait.
Just make sure you wear high boots, that you don't care about getting full of mud.
High heels or boots?
No, high boots.
I want to see you in high heels.
All right. One of the things that is not on the agenda, but we're lucky enough to have two people from the Mass DEP, and they're going to give us a quick rundown of some water testing that they did in the Asonet area. Kate Cavalo and Gerard Martin, both from DEP. We're going to give them a few minutes to go over the results of their testing.
I'm Gerard Martin. How many folks here had their wells sampled this part of the market? So you guys know Kate, the house collecting the samples. This past June, we got a request from a resident to raise some concerns that the groundwater in the area was contaminated with chlorine, a common component in a lot of explosives. Just to orient everybody, there's a serial photograph we have here. We have the Berkeley-Freetown line, Berkeley-Freetown. We do have a little bit of Lake Hill, Cape High actually work in the Lake Hill office, so we're not that far away, kind of in the neighborhood. You can see here the Cape Cod Aggregate Quarry, surrounded by cranberry bogs themselves, the Asonet River, other weapons associated with it, and then the neighborhood, the quarry. We often actually get requests from people who are concerned about impacted private wells. A lot of times if you just somebody sampled their wells and there's something in it and they contact us and if we can't identify the source right away, we'll actually run through some work and try to identify the source. So in this case, we had some concern, we didn't have any actual data that wells were impacted, but we were concerned enough, given the blast operations at the quarry and our knowledge of chlorate and some explosives, to look into it a little bit. We've actually worked on other projects in Westport where a number of private wells were impacted by the chlorine from the Westport fireworks. And in that case, we would walk around the backyard of people who were impacted on the Fourth of July. They had paper debris on their backyard from the fireworks and those were the ones that impacted. Made a lot of sense. So here we started looking into it. We do a number of things, we look into these studies. The first thing we tried to do is figure out the potential source, and we all knew about the blasting at the quarry, so that stands out as a potential source of chlorine. What other contaminants might be associated with it? What else is going on in the area? What other industries might exist in the area? Not a lot up here, a very rural area. We try to come up with groundwater flow direction because we want to look at the potential source and which wells are most likely to be impacted. So we start gathering all this information before we go out there. We start looking into the quarry operations, Kate did a lot of work getting what kind of explosives they used. And actually, most of the explosives that they did use do not contain chlorine.
Do not contain a.
Well decided of chlorine, can still be considered non-chlorine explosives. So that didn't end our investigation, we wanted to do a little bit more work. Groundwater flow out here is a little tricky. Okay, when we started looking into it, most everybody has thought it has bedrock rock. The overburned soil above the bedrock, the groundwater in that is too shallow, it doesn't supply enough water. So most people put their wells into a bedrock aquifer, which makes figuring groundwater flow a little tricky because in a nice standing gravel act on the Cape, you put in three wells, you figure out which way the groundwater is flowing, and it's pretty straightforward. And the bedrock aquifer flows through the fractures and we don't really have a lot of information on which way the fractures are oriented and you can't see them, they're all a little sore. So in that case, we kind of stepped back and said, all right, let's, let's pretend we have no idea what's going on in groundwater flow and we wanted just to circle the quarry and the sampling points. So we looked at the map and we tried to get representative sample locations all around the quarry. Sent out, I think the first round, we sent out requests to 45 properties requesting to sample a well and we got a response of 0.3, giving us permit. We don't just want somebody to have to take a sample, we actually have to get a sign action. So, but we still had some pretty good coverage all the way around the quarry, with the understanding if we found chlorate at one of the locations, we could focus on that area a little bit more in the future. So we collected those samples. At the same time, we're talking to a lot of the residents and some of the residents, you know, raised concerns about other potential contaminants. A lot of times with blasting agents, they also use petroleum products, usually diesel, a heavy petroleum, but that diesel can have multiple organic compounds in it like dengue and polyamide and things that are solvent soluble and can get into the groundwater. Nitrites, also, actually most explosives have nitrites. PNT, trihydrochloride. So you can have those other compounds. When you look at that and with the volatile organic compounds, the type of compounds that typically find explosives, if they were used and released during blasting activities here, they break down in the environment really quickly. First of all, there's not that much in explosive. They are a lot more consumed during the explosion, the ones remaining residual amounts that break down very, very, very quickly. Even at a gas station, a gas station that leaks from its tank petroleum products, the average pool compared to groundwater coming from that is typically 4,600 feet long because then there's actually microbes in the soil that eat the gasoline. So with the blasting operations here and most of the residential properties here, actually on the other side of the surface water lines, we didn't think that it would make sense to look for those compounds. Nitrites, that's another story. They are used in explosives, but they use them a lot of other things to fertilize them. There are also, you can get nitrates coming from a septic system. So the further we get away from the quarry, there's a bunch of other potential sources, cranberry bogs, chem logs, things like that, that would interfere with that. So we focused on the chlorine, you know, we figured that was the best help available from the blasting operations. So the first round, we get in the data and, oh, at the same time, there are a number of monitoring wells on the quarry property itself. Wells that installed just to test the groundwater for, monitor not only groundwater quality but fluctuation in groundwater elevation. So we went to the quarry and sought permission for them to sample not only their supply well, but the monitoring wells. And we split samples, three quarry owners, one of these sampled their wells. And we sent samples out to our lab, they sent samples out to their lab. And we also looked at whatever data they had collected from their monitoring wells over the years, which they have sampled their monitoring wells from VOCs and nitrates. And VOCs were not detected. And the nitrates were very similar to nitrate concentrations we saw in the area. Even though we didn't sample for nitrates, we went to the Board of Health, both Freetown and Berkeley, and looked at nitrate data from private wells going back to the 70s. And we didn't, and, you know, so we looked at the 70s, the 80s, 80s to 90s, 90s to 2000 and really didn't see any significant increase in the nitrate levels over those years, which is actually really good. You don't see anything on the Cape. You see a lot of problems on the Cape. So that looked pretty good. So our perchlorate results indicated that for the most part, the wells look pretty good. The monitoring wells themselves, for the monitoring wells, we didn't detect any chlorine. In four of them, they contained between .084 and 1.22 micrograms per liter or approximately five per billion. Our drinking ones here is two. And actually, the two highest monitoring wells on the quarry property were up in the northern part of the quarry property. I think we had .8 and 1.22. And that's actually, you know, groundwater does, even though it's flowing through fractures, this is a higher elevation of groundwater, it's overall groundwater is flowing to the stuff. Through fractures, it may be zigzagged, but it's flowing to the stuff. So that's what we consider upgrading on the upgrading portion of the quarry property. So another thing that, and you're wondering, well, where is that chlorine coming that we're seeing from these upgrading wells? Well, we use a lot of stuff that is chlorated every day. Household bleach, that you put household bleach, you have household weed, and it starts to break down over time and produce chlorine in the bleach. You use bleach in the laundry, it just drives the laundry to the septic system or dry well and it gets to the groundwater. Chlorinated swimming pools, chlorine in the swimming pool, what we're having going to break down is perchlorate. And you backwash the swimming pool, yeah, that's dischatting into the ground surface and eventually makes it break down to the groundwater. So seeing really low levels of chlorine isn't all that surprising. But for the most part, we didn't see anything in the monitoring wells above the standard. In the samples that we collected from the private wells, chlorine is not detected in 12 of the wells over 23. So 12 of the 23 had nothing detected in it. 12 had, 14 had between .062 and .327, still all alone the drinking water's given. And one well, usually the Cape would like something, had actually seven, but chlorine concentration was mostly seven. And that was over this. So whenever we get a hit like that, the first thing we do is re-sample the well, make sure it's right. And we re-sample the well at 6.6, and that's pretty right. Okay, so they had impact, their well was impacted with chlorine. So as soon as we get the results, we contacted the resident. And with chlorine, from a health point of view, what it does is it interferes with the activity of the direct. So it's really more of a risk to pregnant women, infants, children under 12, and people with a cold, a target. And the way to get here is you can drink bottled water right away, okay, and so you're not adjusting to the perchlorate anymore. It doesn't get into you from taking a shower or anything like that, but using bottled water for cooking and drinking. Or you can put a filter system at the point of use that you never will be typically doing filters, reverse our osmosis system, removes a lot more than the chlorine, you've got ions and bacteria, magnesium, stuff like that, but it would remove the chlorine. So we advised the residents of this, they informed us of using bottled water. We advised them several occasions when we re-sample the wells, you might want to look into a filter system because they're pretty cheap and easy to run, you can actually get it installed yourself, and they still chose that. So we had that one hit and we still wanted to figure out what was going on. So then we came back and we kind of selected more wells and managed to work the sample, sought access from 14, about 14, and received access, we went from nine. Okay, so we're doing pretty good. And most of it is around the neighborhood. We got the results back from that, this is just the past November that we did this work. And seven of the wells were clean, nothing detected, seven of the nine, I sampled. One had chlorine between .05 and above 2. And the well that was initially impacted still had the chlorine, it dropped a little bit to about 4.8. So at the same time, we're talking to folks, trying to figure out what's going on. There are a couple of swimming pools in the area that people may have backwashed, you know, very innocent activity. Another thing that often resulted in that of chlorine is, I know we recommend it on our website, if you have a private well and you have a bacteria problem in your private well, you flush it with chlorine. Okay, based on what you said about chlorine about five minutes ago, you can see where it might be a problem. I mean, it's a good idea because it kills the bacteria and then you might have a little bit of chlorine problem for a short time, time after time. These folks have indicated that they have not flushed the well with chlorine bleach in the recent time period. I think one of the neighbors indicated that they have and actually declined out of the well. And if you're in the same bedrock fracture, it could be that. Okay, just to let people know, a lot of people get nervous when we want to sample their well because if we find something, kind of make a trouble. Actually, under our program, we're doing a program called Wasteland Cleanup. Compounds that are used as pesticides, which using bleach in your wells, fungus, it's killing the bacteria, it's not regulated by a program. In fact, our website recommends it to do it because the risk of getting rid of bacteria, you know, the risk of bacteria is worse than the chlorine. So we weren't regulated anyway, but the folks still declined out of their well choices. So it could have been residuals, whether they bleached their well fairly recently, I think they did have some well work done. So sometimes the well go, might do that after they're done working on a well because they've been messing around with the well a little bit, they also do a little bit of. been messing around with the well a little bit, they also do a little bit of bleach to kill anything and maybe they need to tell the residents that they have done. We did see, at about the same time that we were doing this work, there was a church in Lincoln, so not too far away, just off the area photo, that used to be a public water supply because they also had a Sunday children. So under our water supply program, they're required to analyze their water with chlorate. They unfortunately did it a month after they reported their well had chlorate concentrations above 70, so the same concentration that we're seeing up here. So it is, you know, within that same concentration that you'd expect from that. We did wait a little while and we just re-sample that well last week. And concentration was still around 4.7. Chlorate is a salt, very soluble, so once it gets in the groundwater, it stays in the groundwater. Doesn't break down very readily in the groundwater. It might break down in an oxygen poor environment, but most of our aquifers, obviously, have a fair amount of oxygen in them, so it's not going to break down in that. So we still see low level of chlorate now, again, just. So we're in the process of, we're still looking at a bunch of data that we got from both boards of health, we're compiling everything. We just got that data back last week. We did look at it. And putting together a report that will provide to everybody who's well we sampled, as well as the Board of Health and Chief of Response for the selection of the accounts of the report. So it looks like, based on the work that we had done, that there wasn't a perchlorate release from blasting at the quarry. If there, if it looked like there were, then much faster than us preparing our report saying that there wasn't, we would have issued a notice to the owners of the quarry indicating that they were actually signed under our program and that they have to do this. So we have no indication based on the data that we collected, but that's the case. It looks like it was just normal use of bleach in the neighborhood that impacted that one well. There are actually a number of wells that we sampled in the second round, between the impacted well and the quarry itself, that were clean. And flow through the fractures can be a little tricky, but also if you look at groundwater elevations, we're probably 10 to 20 feet higher here than we are at the quarry itself. So we're looking at all this data to try to, you know, straighten out a conclusion before we finalize. Yes, I think the board has indicated that they'll give three types of questions.
Okay, now, I just want to caution everybody that this is not part of any public hearing. The Mass DEP was kind enough to come today to explain the results of the testing because the board, the Soil Board, wanted that information before we acted on the permit. Now, if there's anybody that has a couple of questions, certainly if the DEP does not mind a few questions, we don't want to extend this very long because we want to get to, back to our business at hand. So if anybody has a question, and I'm not going to allow repetitive questions on the same subject, but go ahead, whoever had their hand up first?
Did you correlate the finding of the wells?
Yeah, we need your name and where you live.
Adriana Amande Rose of Sonoma, Texas. Did you correlate the wells with the depth of the water in those wells? In particular, were the shallow wells more effective than the deeper wells? And could you tell us, were the wells on Cape Cod Aggris property deep wells or shallow wells?
The wells on their property were variable depths and what they actually did is look at sampling the fracture zones, which is where groundwater most likely can migrate to those. They actually had logs of where fractures are in their water, something that we don't typically have in a private drinking water.
Where was the water level in those wells?
Well, there was a number of wells off the top of my head, I'm not sure, that will be included in the report.
I believe they were deep wells, correct?
They are deep wells, so it's green, so it indicated a deep area of fracture. So prior to selecting, sampling the 12, the quarry was in for the analysis necessary to show which fracture was most productive within that well. So that's how we had varying depths. The depth from which samples were collected on the quarry monitoring wells raised from 90 feet below ground to about 140 feet. When we designed, the sample design, and turning back to private wells, are indicated with yellow and red as the monitoring laws will show green and red as the green yellow. When we correlated the sample design, factors that were taken into consideration were the depth of the well indicated by the construction laws held by the Board of Health, both Freetown and Berkeley. So that factor was taken into consideration in signing this.
Okay, lady in the back had her hand up?
Paula Dugan, 168 Ryan Street. So during the time that you were testing the 12th and 13th well for chlorate levels, there were tests, say after December, like between December and now?
Five.
When the chlorate level was going down?
Two.
That was also at a time when the quarry was not able to last due to the pipeline?
Again, given the distance from the quarry and the solubility of the quarry, if it wasn't the quarry, then I don't think that that's the difference. It was seven to six initially, dropped down to four, and then I piece of sample in, similar to what we saw at the last time we sampled.
And you're testing, having to do the secondary direction?
No, we are actually, in our program, we look at what's been leaking from.
Sir? Sir, would you give your name and your address?
Gerald Lloyd, 1 Lindett Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, again, we have monitoring wells in the quarry which indicate groundwater is flowing in a southerly direction. So towards here, groundwater is going to tend to flow towards the big surface water bodies. So we have the Sonora River, okay, and that's what we call a discharge. Groundwater will flow to, discharge into the river. The rivers are fed by the groundwater. That's why rivers flow in August when we have to have my terrain. And so we have the stream coming down here, we have the Sonora River coming down here. So groundwater, you can almost look at this, it's almost like a peninsula. So groundwater would flow off towards these surface water bodies, but over here, this is another high spot, groundwater is going to have a tendency to flow to the surface water bodies as well. So you've got a groundwater flow regime here with groundwater flowing like that, a groundwater flow regime here with groundwater flowing like that, and then over here flowing to these streams like here. So it's not that straightforward. Yep?
Which way, like I've got a lower, underwater, I've got a high bridge.
Yep, the shallow one.
Forty-six feet.
Which is, actually, the shallow, it's a lot shallower, it's all right here. The elevation of the water in your well is probably higher than where it was.
I know they reach, they reach water with 36.
Yep.
They were down 46.
Yep, yeah. So you, so groundwater flowing in this area is probably fluid quicker. Yes, like this. And that's, you know, we don't, we weren't taking elevations out of your wells because that doesn't work because you're pumping a well all the time, the level is dropping and rising and stuff like that. This is based on looking at United States Geological Topographic map and surface water body elevations, and it's a practice that we've been using, you know, since I've been in this business, and it works really well.
I do, in 168 Ryan Street, we have a couple of questions. One is if this, if the chlorate is likely to flow off into the river, what does that, what would be the potential impact on having a quarry like that to the river? Also, you know, is that a danger? Due to potential fractures in the rock, could affect another thing in that way?
Potentially. It's IC, it's all paperwork.
We actually have brought up such things in the quarry. And, you know, we had, we had people indicate that to us, and then the geologist at CCA has seemed to kind of discount that sort of thing, or what, in general, what fractures can do and how the quarry would affect the surroundings based on the surrounding water as well. So there's really two different questions there.
Well, for chlorate, as I mentioned before, the health risk of chlorate is found in the thyroid. And it's really not an ecological risk. So discharge of chlorate to surface water body, even if it works in the groundwater and specific concentrations, wouldn't have a risk to frogs and gerbils and critters and plants and something like that in surface water body. It's a human health risk for a very selective population. But we're not seeing concentrations in the groundwater out there that would indicate any kind of release of chlorate other than, it's an adult ecological use of the chlorate for bottles. I know I have a private well I've chlorinated in the past, and, you know, I think a lot of people do that. Your other question about groundwater flow, again, our concern, and we take my work at DEP and Bureau of Waste and Clean Up, VOC, we handle acids waste, so it's things that are released in groundwater that, you know, spoil and acids materials. We really aren't supposed to get into the, you know, pumping of the quarry, is that affecting groundwater elevations elsewhere? But I am an earth type geologist, so of course I look at that stuff too to see what's going on. And Cape Cod Aggris has been monitoring the water levels. Actually, they put particulates in the positive in their monitoring wells, which meant our monitoring wells, to see the effect of pumping on their property. And we haven't seen any kind of decline in, you know, you're going to see ups and downs with seasonal variation, which is very normal, but haven't seen any declines in the, significant decline in the surface groundwater elevation on their property. In addition, these surface water bodies are always at those elevations. And so even if you're lowering the groundwater elevation over here, this is a constant hydrolog thing. It's always at that elevation and shouldn't impact the elevations going on the other side of that.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has a question? All right, I want to thank, one more.
You're not quite positive that anything emanated from Cape Cod Aggris. You can't prove that anything did emanate from Cape Cod Aggris.
Based on the work that we have done out there, we're looking at the type of explosions that they use, the groundwater sampling that we've done both on their property and around the area, it doesn't look like there's been a release.
Doesn't look like it, so you can't actually say nothing emanated from Cape Cod Aggris?
I can.
Now, is there some kind of benign markers, tracers, if you will, that you could insert on their property and trace the flow of those chemicals into the surrounding septic wells? Is there some kind of benign markers that could tease us to know that groundwater is not being contaminated?
We have groundwater quality that indicates that groundwater is not being contaminated on land, except the quarry. And respectively, I could require anything like that?
I'm just asking, is such a thing?
It would be very difficult. Given that they're rock and they're not having any fracture damage, which is a difficult thing to do, a lot of times what they do use for tracers, things like salts, because it's so soluble, which is the reason. It's not meant to use hazards, but you get salts and dyes and everything. They help conserve the traces because they flow with the ground. They're not, they're not, and by source. So based on what we've seen out there, and if it looked like in under our program, you don't have that lot of evidence to send a notice to somebody that we think they've not released. We have to identify them as a potentially responsible crime. So, you know, it makes it easier on us. If it looked like they had anything that indicated that there was a release, they would get a notice from us saying, it looks like there's been a release, you have to assess report, and then eventually clean it up, but we just don't have the information to cause it to be.
Thank you very much. We've had questions for 15 minutes. I just want to thank Mass DEP, Kate Cavalo for all of her hard work, and Joe Martin for doing the presentation tonight. I think it was very beneficial to the residents, very beneficial to the Soil Board to hear this, and I really appreciate it. And I'm glad, I'm very, very glad that we, we held off on any action on this permit until we had results from DEP to give us a real good feeling that you guys were right on top of things and really helped us out. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate you coming down here tonight. Okay, with that, the Soil Board, we have, as you know, we have 26 conditions that have been attached to the permit. And the permit is, actually was filed on October 12th, 2011, and you can see how long it's been since we've had this permit. It's permit number 0507. I know at, when we closed the public hearing, we had set aside 26 conditions. Condition number 26 covers this permit through December 31st of 2013. I know that the Soil Board had a copy of the conditions that I emailed to the Soil Board when I received them, and I hope everybody has had an opportunity to review them. And at this point in time, I will turn it over to any member of the Soil Board that wants to make any type of motion. Ms. Hannah, again, I just want to say that this is not a public hearing. We did not open our public hearing, and so this is a regular meeting of the Soil Board. Thank you.
I want to ask that you use your microphone and mic to help the jury.
You want?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me?
Okay, I must be, soft smoke in here.
I'm trying to get up.
You're mild.
Mr. Chairman, in reviewing the minutes and go back in my mind's eye there, we have already approved the permit. The only thing that was outstanding was the finalization of the conditions.
That's correct.
And also the DEP report.
That's correct.
Having the conditions finalized, Mr. Chairman, and we've received the report from the DEP.
Can you hear him? Okay.
I just wanted to be sure that that's, because they've already voted to issue the permit.
Right, they've been operating under that permit.
Right, right. To, to the 20th of December, I just want to make sure that the dates coincide with each other. We voted to extend it to 20th of December on the conditions, it says December 31st.
Well, let's amend and make it December 31st, it would make sense at the end of the year.
That's fine, I just want to make sure they both reflect the same thing. So if we need to make a motion to amend the permit as issued to December 31st, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to extend the permit, to change the date on the permit to December 31st rather than December 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, unanimous? All right. Anything else we have to do on this?
Well, you want to?
We have to vote on the conditions, yes.
Vote on the conditions.
To make part of the, so do I have a, you make a motion to what? Adopt these conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt these conditions?
Second.
Any second? Okay, motion made and seconded to adopt the conditions and issue permit number 507. Correct? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody? Unanimous? Okay, the permit has been issued. Okay, the next order of business?
Just for one year?
That ends December 31st of this year. Okay?
Can we know what the conditions are? We got the conditions read, so we know what they are.
Well, we could actually give you a copy of the conditions if you want.
Okay.
Okay, that's, because I don't want to go through 26 conditions here, we've got a few other things to do tonight.
Sir, can I just take one suggestion on the conditions and it's online? Could we just request electronic data so we can circulate it among ourselves easily? So when you collect a report, you get an electronic report or an electronic plan?
Well, certainly you can come to the Soil Board at any time and request copies. I'm not going to promise, I'm not going to promise electronic anything, okay? Because generally speaking, we don't do our business that way. But if anybody wants a copy of, I have a, I have a copy of the conditions here if you want it, I'll give you my copy because I can get another one.
I have an electronic report.
Oh, well, see, you don't, you're asking me to do it and you already have one.
I got it today.
There you go.
Very late.
Okay. All right, the next thing that has to do with the Soil Board is minutes. Let me find my agenda. What do I do with my agenda? Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the April 26, 2012 minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We're looking at the April 26th minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just have one, one change if I could, Mr. Chairman. Bottom of the second page, I just wanted to make it a little bit more clear relative to that statement. that conditions were not voted on individually, rather the site plan was approved with those conditions that apply to the quarry operation as represented on the quarry.
Does our recording secretary have that information?
I haven't been down far, I'll submit it to him.
Does anybody have any issue with Kevin's statement? Okay, with that, if nobody has any other issues with the April 26 minutes, I'll have a, I'll entertain a motion to adopt these.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor to adopt the April 26 Soil Board minutes with the correction that Mr. DeMaris entered? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
Make that Lisa abstain, I believe she wasn't at the meeting.
Right.
Okay. That's number one. Okay, we're up to the May 17th, 2012 meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review those.
I have, and again, Mr. Chairman, I do, I just want to clarify the, the statement that I had made. The statement is halfway now, the first page, Mr. DeMaris clarified to the abuders, the conditions governing the soil permit were not waived individually when the permit was issued, rather they were discussed when the site plan was approved.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do, sir.
All right, would you give it to our secretary? Okay, anybody else have any changes? All right, so I would ask for a motion for the, to adopt the May 17th Soil Board minutes with Kevin's change.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Right. And finally, the June 11th, 2012 Soil Board meeting. The minutes. Anybody have any changes on that?
No, sir.
Okay, no changes. Have a motion, please.
Chairman, I make a motion to put the minutes of the meeting on June 11th and 12th.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Okay.
You got your bills paid?
The next thing on the agenda here is to sign the schedule of bills payable.
It's $5.78, Mr. Chairman.
So are you paying?
I'll pay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, to pay the bills.
Can we afford it?
Just barely. Right now, we can't.
After that, we will have the down to $230.
To get us through June 30th?
Now we'll get it.
You better, you better make the Finance Committee Chairman a friend of yours if you're looking for a transfer.
As long as you don't have any, long.
I'll second it.
There's a second, a motion to pay the $5.78 bill. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay. And this is the best part of the meeting where we set up the site, the spring site reviews. Karen, how many permits do we have to go over that day?
Only five.
Only five. And it's usually a Saturday morning, and we usually meet at a specific place and go from place to place.
And, and the newest board member brings coffee and donuts for everybody.
Actually, if he doesn't want to bring them, he can just treat us. He can just treat us.
As long as he's paying, it doesn't matter whether he brings them, we go there.
So what we got for dates, Karen?
We call it Memorial Day weekend.
This is for May, so why don't we go, first weekend of May is off. Yeah, that's my anniversary weekend.
Your anniversary weekend? We ought to set up for that day, you'll get in trouble.
Already in trouble, Paul. How about the second weekend in May?
What's the date?
The 11th, right?
Let's see. May 11th?
The day before Mother's Day, is that okay?
The 11th, is that all right?
It's okay with me.
Yeah, I can do the final weekend, so it's got to be that.
Yeah, let's do the 11th.
All right, where we going to meet that day?
Well, downtown, down in the zone with Peter Ward's and.
Good place to meet, Duncan Dome.
Duncan Dome.
Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, Duncan Dome, what do you think?
I've got coupons, it's all right.
Nine o'clock?
9:00 AM?
Nine.
D and D.
Nine, I'd need it seven, good.
Seven? At that chance, I'll be there.
Nine o'clock is fine.
Okay.
Karen, you might have to give Lisa a call, make sure she's up. All right. Maria, it's okay with you? All right. All right, so that's the deal. I think that ends, nothing else.
And then the next meeting, then schedule for, you mean your last elected meeting?
Yeah, I don't know what the next selectmen's meeting.
The next one after the 11th?
No, the next selectmen's meeting after the 11th.
Of May.
It's the 20th.
The 20th. Is that okay?
I won't be here.
Vacation again?
No, my daughter's graduating from fantasy school, so.
Congratulations.
I'll be.
Congratulations, Lisa.
In Vermont at that point.
Look at all the extra money you're going to have now.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so we'll see you on the 11th for a meeting on the 20th.
Okay. All right, anything else to, any other business?
No, we got to move, we got to move.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn, any second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. Hope you can make it, watch out for the police on the way.
Do you want to stick around?
You want to watch the rest of this? Thank you. Thanks.
Call time soon.
Yeah, okay. Maybe tomorrow, when's that?
Call you tomorrow.
I have to just find my, I just want to find my agenda. Late agenda.
They can't, they can't take over.
on the agenda that we want to withdraw, and that was a resignation letter that the gentleman was kind enough to reconsider, and he's going to stay on with us on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we'll remove that from the agenda. And now we're getting to new business. And there was a couple of things that came in, I just want to make sure the boards are aware of this. I didn't think this would be an issue, but on one of our permits for Nathan's Garage, when we created the permit, we used just Nathan's Garage, and it should have been Nathan Russett doing businesses, Nathan's Garage. And can we just correct that? We need a motion to correct this?
I think we just need to something new.
We'll just sign a new one?
Really? We don't have to go through the process again?
No, all you have to do is sign the new one acknowledging the name change.
That's all.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I thought we had to go through the process again. But that's fine.
All right, so Allie, just put it together and we'll get it signed. Okay. This is also, I don't know if everybody got this today, opening day at Little Fenway. That's going to be Saturday, April 27th at 10 o'clock. The Board of Selectmen has been invited to attend and we must RSVP. So I think I'll go, maybe they'll let me take batting practice. How about you, Lisa, you going to go?
I'm going.
We're all going to go, Lisa's going to go. Okay, so are you RSVP? Okay. Also, just for anybody that may be interested, this Wednesday around 10 o'clock, Brown Bag at the Senior Center, and certainly anybody that might be around that wants to help out with carrying the bags and so forth, I'm sure Barbara and Rose would really appreciate the help. Around 10 o'clock. And this is a real thrill, Lee, because you haven't done this before. I thought Lisa was joking with me two years ago, but every year, the third grade class, all the third graders meet with the Board of Selectmen at the school, and they want to know what we really do. So it takes us two or three weeks to figure out what we really do. But, and then they ask us different questions, so they really put us on the hot seat. And that's coming up, they want a date of either June 4th, 5th, or 6th, whatever we can conjure up, at 9:30 in the morning to 11:30.
Yeah, I thought that was long.
That is long, isn't it?
Hmm.
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll have to give you some dates.
The two hour third grade interrogation.
That's what it is. And something else under new business that we were lucky enough to, I think it was Allie or Jackie sent out a list of all the boards that we have to do appointments for, and I want to maybe discuss this with the board for a second. I would really like Allie to go through and check about all these committees and things to make sure, one, that they meet, two, that they file minutes, and if they don't meet and they don't file minutes, why do we have it?
Right. Are they still necessary?
Right, so maybe she can spend some time doing that?
That sounds good to me.
All right. And then we've got old business. We have two things under old business. One thing just came up earlier today. The first thing under old business. Mr. Brown, I'll let you discuss this one, because you have all the details.
We received communication from Orego Solar concerning the solar fees that we assess for solar farms being constructed in pre-town. We really don't have a permit fee that applies directly to solar that used when they located one facility, an old building permit fee which had them based on square footage, our size of the facility, resulting in a fee that seemed to be out of sync with what was in, being charged in the region, although the fees ran the gamut from a very small nominal fee to one that was a lot more extensive. In the memorandum that I submitted to the board, I'm recommending that we create a new fee for permitting solar farms. The recommendation would be at the rate of $16,500 per megawatt of power to be generated. This amount is the same amount that is assessed by the town of Dartmouth. Dartmouth has been successful in attracting the number of solar farms, they're probably the second most successful area within the Commonwealth. And just as additional information, I wanted to point out that Dartmouth has been successful in attracting solar farms, and they assess them at their commercial value, they do not grant pilots for those facilities.
So what's the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen regarding this? Want to study further? I know our rate was pretty high.
It was high.
Very high, yeah. You want to hold off and look at it?
They didn't balk at it, though.
That's what I was going to say.
Well, they filed a request for us to look at it. I think it's, I'm hoping that it doesn't lead into anything else.
Right. Can we, can we take action on this at our next meeting?
Yeah, this was information, it was not for action.
All right.
Okay. All right, so.
I just, I'm just a little leery of moving this forward without, like, thinking about it a little bit more, because they, when they knew that they were coming here and knew that they were building, they didn't really balk at what we were doing and what we were charging them until now.
Well, they didn't know what the rate was. That was the problem.
Right, but.
No, they waited for at least six or eight months after they hated, and then they commented on it.
Right, right.
So I felt like it deserved a.
It does, and I just want to.
A realistic assessment because they were not holding it over our head, but, but I think you should take some time and look.
Okay.
Kind of standard business practice, isn't it, for business to look for tax shelters and things like that? You know, they don't get anything unless they ask, so the first step. I agree with Lisa, we have to give this a look before we do forward.
I'm not disagreeing with how you went about it at all, I'm just, I just need time to digest this and figure it out.
And the other thing, Mr. Brown, is, I'll give this back to you.
Thank you. We were approached by Lakeville Community Access Media, Lake Cam, concerning the, they are pre-town, pre-town channel nine, which apparently is their channel 20. When we signed our cable agreement with, with Middleborough, it was only for the broadcasting of Board of Selectmen meetings and annual town meetings and meetings such as that. We discovered afterwards that Lake Cam is actually maintaining our channel and providing programming through the, through that channel to our residents. This is primarily programming involving the schools, and they have asked us to enter into an agreement with them so that they can continue producing and transmitting that material to us. The agreement mirrors the agreement that we have with Middleborough, and it's $5,000 a year. We met with the chairman of the Lake Cam Authority, we had some issues to resolve in terms of the contract, those have been done, and the agreement before you is one that the chairman communicated was acceptable.
We already, we already approved it, so. I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with Lake Cam.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to sign the agreement with Lake Cam, and that is to air all the regional school activities so our residents will still have the ability on channel nine to view everything that goes on at the regional school department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's the story on that. Unless there's something else?
No, can we just add library painting under old business?
I will probably, I will probably send an email to the appropriate party about every two or three weeks.
Thank you.
You know that old saying, she's back?
Yeah. Sorry.
All right.
They, they won't forget, I can assure you.
Oh, no. I'm good.
Anybody want to adjourn and go home, or do you want to, we'll hang around a little bit longer?
No, I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much for attending the meeting, and see you in a couple of weeks.